Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
It is one minute exactly past the hour of 6 o'clock and we are calling, I'm calling to order the W N U E S T and my colleague is welcome to call her meeting to order as well.
Happy to call the, um, to order the meeting at the Westminster School Board. Thank you.
All right, and this is the point where we ask for adjustments to the agenda. I have one for our board and would welcome frankly the Westminster Board to collaborate and that will be a brief chat about negotiations since both Cheryl and I are on that committee and I think we're close enough in discussions that we need to sound you out and find out what you think.
Would you put that under 6B?
We will put that, we will put that under actually 7, oh, I think it's a 7.
I think it's old.
Well, then, then here you go. Yeah, so that's happening. And are there any other adjustments anybody has or any additions anybody needed to chat about?
I have one.
Oh, you would.
Just, uh, two town meeting questions.
Oh, good, because that's, thank you for that, because that, I had a question about that with one of our colleagues. So, yes, let's do that and let's make that a 7 or 6D, I guess, would that be right?
6D.
Yeah, all right, and, and because I can't write on a screen, you're going to have to both remind me when we get there. Okay. So Communications and Public Comments next on our list. Do we have anyone that would like to make a public comment? I see a couple people I don't know, so maybe they do. I don't know who Mr. Kemp is and I don't know, I don't see any hands up or anything about him. All right, well, if you have anything you'd like to say, just unmute yourself and introduce yourself. If not, we'll move along. I'm trying to guess that silence means that we're moving on. So we are now on to review and approve board minutes. Did any of you look at that minutes? Did anyone see anything needs to fix? Yes?
I was not included on the number on the top.
Then let's make that.
That's Ginger Madzowsky.
It sure is. Is there anything else that, that anyone sees that was missing?
Need a motion to approve?
I need a motion to approve with the amendment suggested. Do I have that motion?
Motion to approve with the amendment suggested.
All right, we'll do the roll call as we do. Melissa, hi there. Hi, I got a yes from Melissa. I, Elise?
Yes, sorry.
I got a yes from Elise. I saw, there it is, Jessa in her hard hat. Jessa?
Yes.
All right. Let's see, going down the line here, Ginger?
Yes.
All right, Lynn?
Yes.
That's all from my board, how about from your board? Cheryl, you want to call your role?
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
You call the role.
Charlie.
Yes.
And Cheryl, yes. All right, and then.
Okay, so everybody has agreed that with that one change, we're off and running. Flora, I talked to Flora real briefly and I think, yes, Flora's here. So Flora, talk to us about finance. I know Cheryl had a question and I think there probably comes some others. So you're on. We can see you.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Um, yes?
Go ahead.
Um, so currently, yesterday with it, presented the interim budget for the SU. So, I know you weren't there, you did miss that part. Right now, we are done with the auditors, meeting next week on Tuesday, so they could just tell us which one is the status, that they need anything else, or they actually finalized with their reviews for us. I spoke today with, well, I did email Liz regarding the information that you needed about librarian. So the librarian right now, she is full-time under Westminster, so I'm waiting on Angela to see which one will be her needs for librarian, if they are gonna hire someone or if she's just gonna have a staff that will be covering that position.
Yeah, I think we had, we had this, we had raised the hope that either the position might end up being covered by the SU and then charged back to the schools based on need and that was, that was, and I, if that's a thing we might be able to do, I'd like us to and if we cannot, otherwise we don't. That's, I think, all right, I think what we'd like to do is keep the arrangement we currently have, just need, it's just to, because there are now two districts, you need to figure out the allocation.
I'm not sure you're clear. Liz is proposing a full-time position at Westminster, so that does impact you. It was 80%, 20%.
Okay, so I didn't know that, that you guys believe that you want to go to full-time.
When she presented to us at the budget meeting, she presented.
Okay. I didn't realize you.
I think that I was not clear on that, so that's a change for you guys and we'll have to do some.
At this point, there will be what Angela feels that their needs are.
No, that's not.
So that we allocate that in her budget. Currently, she does not have any librarian in her budget, just Liz does. And she, Liz does have her for the past budget and the, and the current one, she has a librarian, but she has her 100%.
That's the change for the.
Okay, so we, there needs to be some sort of provision somehow for getting library help.
Just a question, it's not locked, it doesn't last.
Okay, um, thank you for that, because I clearly was not clear on that. Got it, all right. What else we got on that?
Can I just say?
Yeah.
We, we do have that in our budget and we do pay for that out of Grafton's budget.
Well, see, that's what I had thought, so we have, we have a line item, we just don't have a person.
We just don't have a person. There, there is money allocated toward that one, that point two position.
Point two.
Right.
So it's not, it wouldn't, I don't, I don't know how, what, what we would need to allocate for it until we know who it's going to be, so we know what they'll get paid, right?
So. If you need to, well, I can point you there. I don't, you'll have to tell me what you think you actually need and get, if you can, you know, give us some sort of swag assessment of what's needed there, just so we can plug in a number, because I don't want us to run a shortage later when we, you know, these blisters are so incredibly tiny that even minor staffing things look like a bigger blip than they would on, say, high school. I'll, I'll assume you and Andy can come up with recommendations in the next couple of weeks.
Jack, I think this one, we raised it two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Was where we got into a discussion of how could there be a model throughout the Supervisory Union?
Right.
That could help fill such roles and that's still to be explored.
Yeah, and, and if I missed the, if I missed the SU budget meeting, I can't believe I did that. If I missed the SU budget meeting, that was absolutely front and center of the discussions I wanted to have, was whether or not we should be centralizing these, and you had a term for this, Andy, the other day, these type of staff positions. Can't remember what you called them, but, you know, it's.
Oh, related, like related services, like.
Related services.
Similar to our related service providers, our occupational therapists.
Yeah.
Providers.
That, that, that both they and, and perhaps even maintenance and that kind of support might be more rationally centered at, at the SU level and I'm really upset that I missed the meeting, if there was one.
I don't, I don't think you missed a meeting.
Okay.
So, that's kudos there. I think.
Missed a few lately.
Now, now, I could have missed the meeting too, so we could both be in the same position. I think, I think the other piece is, hearing that and I've heard from some other folks that it's something we need to go back and re-look at, because we did present a preliminary, just kind of, here's our rough numbers, just like we've done with all the other boards last night.
Right.
But to go back and look at, if we were to, you know, do a mock-up and say we moved these positions to central office.
Yeah.
And under the SU budget, what would that look like? What would the impact look like? And then what would the potential assessments be back to the different districts? Because I think that would be the other piece. If we were to, let's say librarians consolidate all our variants under, under SU, would we assess back the same way as everything else?
Yeah.
Back on an ADM percentage?
Or would you do a time of service?
Or would, yeah, so, so I think those are, and maybe we need to do two columns. If we did it, A, we, you know, if we did ADM, sell would be, or do we do time of service back?
So we, we need to make certain that that's marked as a discussion at the, next time we do.
We will do that. I will, just while we're on the librarian piece, just to sit in my head, I did have an opportunity once to visit a school district in another state that had moved to a model where they actually had only one librarian for the entire district.
Yeah.
And they, they did it as a cost savings measure. I'm not promoting that in any way, but it really made them rethink how to use their library media services and whatnot. And, and they were very creative at the school we visited, of how they did it. Kids still had access to books, they still had access to a lot of the same services, it just looked different. But the, the library person came to the school one day a week kind of thing, so they moved throughout the district. The principal wasn't 100%, you know, didn't say that was the solution for it, but, you know, they, again, the district dealt them a hand, they solved the problem, and I guess so on.
Yeah, and I may, I want to let Flora finish, because other people have questions, not just me, but I, I would say that the one thing, my impression is that library services tend to be more of a support function when you're in high school and tend to be more of a, of an instruction function when you're in elementary school, because kids don't know how to use these media forms, unless for my two-year-old granddaughter who can, you know, who seems to know how to do everything on a, on a cell phone, but that's not the spread for her today. All right, Flora, we've interrupted you enough, continue.
I don't really have a lot, that's all I have right now.
All right, then why don't we just run it around the horn and if people have questions, starting from my, for this left.
I'm thrilled that the audit process is complete and that we'll see those reports soon. One of the things that's critical for our budget development process is to see the end numbers for the last fiscal year. And we've been looking for that for a while and I just look forward to it as soon as you can possibly share it.
This is, this is surplus or non-surplus and all that kind of stuff, even though it rolls over for the year deficits, I don't think really do, so it's important, if we're gonna, if we're getting anything in there.
Correct.
Were there any surprises that, you're, I asked, were there any surprises, not that I want to make, in terms of the audits so far you're aware of?
So far for, for your district, I do not feel there's any surprises. I did share report Cheryl with your expenses and your revenues for the current year, which is not overall, but at least it will give you an idea. I don't know if you saw them.
I did see that, I was looking for the, the other year, the end numbers.
The previous year?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, I just thought you were looking for whatever we had for FY '21.
We're always eager to see as many numbers as we can. I'm, as Jack just said, I was looking to see where, the period that is being audited, where we ended up with any surplus revenue and any, any overage if there were.
How close we came to the budget.
Correct.
I saw a question over here.
Yes, this is for Flora. Hi Flora, this is Charlie Hetzer, Westminster. I got a copy of that report you sent to, thank you very much. It was way above my pay grade, I couldn't understand it, but, but I think somebody else had suggested, I don't, without it, without creating any new work, is there a version of that which tracks changes over the years? Like I said, the last five years, how much did we spend on the bigger line items? So that we can see the trends? Because just, the, the numbers for this fiscal year don't mean anything to me at all, I've no idea if they're high or low or if they've changed, but I don't want you to have to create something new, but does that exist in the business office somewhere, a tracking over time?
So, the tracking over time will be pulling audit reports as for systematic. Right now, the, as far as I could go, it will be for the past three years, which, which is FY '19, '20, and '21, because that's the new system that we have is e-finance, anything prior to FY '19, that is ADS. And currently, I only have one employee in the office that has a license to utilize that system and that actually knows how to use it. So, it's not like we can not get the information, we could always get information from ADS, but we need to know, like, how far back would you like to go?
Well, even the three years would be, would be great, but not 105 lines, but like 20 lines, if there are such.
I might be able to help you, Flora and I might be able to cooperate to help you. Without it being a big deal. Yeah. You know, I, I tend to do my, I tend to do spreadsheets independently, as most people know, so that's, we'll, we'll get there, I think. Were there further questions here? Because I know there might be some elsewhere. Did I see your hand up?
Yeah. Okay. Hi Flora, I, I spent a little time going over, and this is sort of in preparation for understanding the budgets coming up, but going over the current expenditure reports and, I, I noticed that there are, it's a little hard to make out, because for instance, in the pre-kindergarten sections, there's, they're all named the same. I know that there's one for Athens, I know there's one for Westminster, and then there's a third one that I, I don't really, maybe that's an SU, except that the, the SU, I believe, is in charge of.
The first page is special education, early childhood special education, so D C S E is early childhood special education, so, and then if it just says early childhood or.
Let's see, it still says D C S E.
You're right.
All the same. But this one is 32,000, that's 88, and then at the end, there's a, you know, current expenditures for the year.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
And it's all, all the same labels.
I got you.
Thanks, says the other guy who knows how to dive into a spreadsheet, so.
Yes. So I suspect it had, they're different, it's Athens or Grafton Athens budget, Westminster budget and an SU budget, but I don't, it's not at all clear from labeling. I think they all have.
I think we all have our own final agreement that labeling continues to be an incredible challenge in terms of anybody being unable to stop it. Are there questions from our?
I believe that the part that you're looking at is the budget versus actual report? Are you looking at the report that I sent to Cheryl as well, which was expenditures only?
The expenditure, detail expenditure report. Correct. And it just, I mean, there's several, we'll, we'll get into it more when we get into budgets, but this pre-kindergarten section, if there's three categories and they all seem to be named the same thing.
They look identical.
They have expenditures for the year, so, and I, you know, I have my suspicions about them, but I was just wondering what they, what, why they're separate and what they refer to.
You can send her a note, just identifying them, I, I know what you're talking about. I want to ask the folks who are remote this evening if they have any questions for Flora, beginning with Melissa, anything? Jessa?
I do see for the pre-K and the first page, and you do have that, that is tuition.
Did you read it?
This is the first line, correct?
So, so Flora, the first line is early education tuition, correct?
Okay.
And the, the question I think is, because if you look at page one and page six, I'll just use those two, so I, oh, because I'm page five, hang on. So there, again, they're different account codes, but they all have the same descriptors. So, you know, so it's, it's 101, 133401.
1334 is, is the, the portion from early ed that gets adjudicated to Westminster, because we assess them as if they were separate.
Right.
Because they have different codes. So that 1334, that is the Westminster area, and then the other one, which it will be the 110, I think, is it 1?
1, yeah, 1120.
Yep, that will be it then, Grafton.
And then, because there's a third one, 3095.
What page is that? I'm sorry.
Page 11. At the bottom of the page.
Yeah, so those were codes created, but as you could see, that line was not used.
Okay, so, so you're saying 30, 3095 is, we're not using it, but they're created?
Yeah, so those were previous lines that were created, but we moved them in only two buckets. So we only used the Grafton portion and the Westminster portion, which is the 1120 and the 1334. As you can see, this line here, the 3095, that is not, that balance available, that was not used.
But, but the money was budgeted, correct?
Yes, but then when Marlene does this, when she assesses, she just take it from the different areas.
So basically, it's coming from that common bucket to the separate buckets and that's how you structure this thing. It wasn't, when you do the arithmetic, it wasn't real clear, to be honest with you.
Well, the, the problem that we had was that when the codes were created, they created all these separate lines and they pulled all from different areas and it was like all over the place. When the auditors came in, they didn't know from which lines we were pulling the amounts. So the 3095 was supposed to be the common bucket for both of the schools, because they're union elementaries. Well, the previous accountant that we had, she created separate lines, a group for Westminster and another group for Grafton. Then the auditor suggested that they were union elementaries, they shouldn't be assessed separate, they should then be assessed as 3095, which is the common bucket.
Okay, because that, I would respectfully disagree with the auditors, considering what we're trying to do is have separate entities coming next year and this is part of the prep and any good auditor would know that you'd want to have that structured a year in advance, but that's just me.
And I understand, so when it comes coding wise, for, for example, we would have to split the, well, since you guys are splitting already, we wouldn't have to create new codes and everything, because expense wise, you do have your separate lines already.
Yeah, all right.
But, but Flora, I guess what I might just ask for a little clarification, in the 3095 bucket, there's budgeted $60,962, but then the two separate, the one for Grafton and the one for Westminster add up to 90, more than that, 120,000.
That's kind of a big arithmetic.
So, did we budget 60,962 and is that going to get returned or, like, I, yeah, what does it mean?
There you go.
Because I see where you're asking the question, because now that I understand that one is Grafton and one is Westminster, what's the bucket for them?
There's also a starting code though, it's a little weird, because usually they, when these things are lined up, it'd be the same first number.
Correct. The portion that does not get used, that is still there, is because it wasn't assessed, so it's not like it will get back, it will just stay there. But bottom line, as you can see, they still have like a balance available, they did not went over their budget, actually they went under budget by 1.0.
Right, I, I think that we'll, we'll just have to be clear when we go to make the budget.
As word, to put what and, and how to allocate it into Grafton and everything.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, that's all I've got.
Let me walk, I forget who I asked and who I haven't asked for questions off of the screen. Pardon?
Yes, Melissa.
Thank you. Somebody paying attention, I'm not sure I am. All right, hey, Elise, any questions?
No, thank you very much.
How about you, Jessa? This is drinking a cup of coffee. We'll get back to you, Jessa. All right, so I guess that's, that's all we've got for now for you, Flora. Thank you for, for walking us through this. I would respectfully suggest that at some point, when you have another cheery conversation with the e-finance folks, that you do what we used to do back in the day when this garbage was written, and that was, you had, you had a short, you had a short descriptor and because it was never clear, you would write a long descriptor, so you'd have like, you know, 21 characters or something, so you could actually figure out what on earth the short descriptor meant. I, I realize this software is written the stone age, or maybe that's, you know, when there was like a 15 character maximum, but it'd be a waste worth asking, see if they can fix that, because it makes it awfully hard for anyone to interpret these, these, these descriptors, so.
I'm gonna be honest there, and I don't want it to push that part to e-finance, so.
Did you go right?
Actually is, the previous accountant that we had took it upon herself to update a lot of lines for the description that worked for her, but not for everybody else. That creates now a lot of work and our, and, and the new person that I have doing this, so this is not only union elementary, this is for every single school, we need to go in, update lines and make it more universal for everybody to understand. It happened to me when I started and still it happens, some lines that I just don't know what they mean, and then I will have to go in and look into the description to know why they were labeled X or Y way. So this is not any finance issue, this was the previous person that we have labeling and creating accounts and putting descriptions that helped her, not everybody.
I got it. Do you have an ETA when we might be able to look at getting all that cleaned up? I'm assuming sometime next year, but just, just an idea.
Ideally, this has to be fixed, so when we get the budget and everything set, so we will have a budget printed out that everybody could read and understand, but, you know, right now, it's, it's one step at a time, we're trying to finalize everything with the orders and everything, have that out of the way, so we could start going into the lines and fixing those things and.
Do you think, do you think we might have that by time before March printing for, for our presentations? I mean, I'll, we'll write something manually if we have to, but it'd be really nice if we didn't have to.
No, I, I wouldn't want to do anything manually, this has to be something that will be uniform for every single school, so we could all have the same lines and descriptions. So we could all have the same lines and descriptions. And that only helps the principals, it helps board members, it helps the community, it helps us, the one that don't know all the codes yet. It is a help for everybody. And I'm not gonna lie, Shauna has been working and trying to fix some of those lines. But right now, we are working as well with grants and closing grants.
Got all that. The one reason I ask is because I just wrote a long popus note, Raffinius, saying we're going to make this much more transparent and I like to not be a liar. There we go. All right, thank you very much. I think that's it for finance. What's on next on the pile here? I believe it's new business outdoor learning, nature outdoor learning?
I asked it just to be put on the agenda in part because we had a little discussion about this at our last meeting. David Major was not able to be with us. And I just wanted to bring everybody up to date, because it's part of the discussions, the committee that's working with Andy on how to prioritize the use of ESSER monies. In ESSER 2, there were already some funds there for some pavilions. And relooking at that, the committee talked and made some recommendations and has moved toward some funds that could still include a pavilion if the school wanted it. For example, Central Elementary might, if the old YMCA building ends up being taken down and there's possibly an opportunity where there could be a community shelter of some kind or community gathering place. But more broadly, what the committee ended up recommending was that we prioritize monies for professional development so that money would be available to each of the elementary schools to help teachers who choose to go outside for enhanced learning, to have some support, how do you do it, you know, show me how. An experienced teacher can stand there with them and really show them how, we have great people in this region, we're doing that every day. He can help us with that. So one category for professional development, and the other for materials. It's like clothing for the kids, snow boots, rain gear, things that really make it easier and safer for teachers to open the door and go outside. I want to say philosophically, this is not intended to be another mandate for anybody, this is simply a resource. This is a resource and an opportunity. And we actually already have a lot going on in our many schools here. But this is a way to meet actually the requirements of COVID, that this is good for kids socially and emotionally, academically. And in terms of physical health and well-being, getting them outdoors, it reduces the risks. So it's a, this is one of the few bright lights in the COVID era, that there's a congruence here between what the evidence says about the benefits of being outdoors for children and teachers as well. And what this new money could give us support for for the next three years. Andy and I've had some conversations about it, if we can help teachers, that, some are already doing it and thriving. But others, you know, go, how do you do that? And I'm not sure about, you know, how do you manage the kind of interactions between kids? If you've never done it before, it really helps to have one or more experienced teachers there with you to show you, show you how you do it. So I just wanted to have our public know that a small amount, relatively speaking, compared to the whole of these federal monies coming our way, or at least at this point in time, recommended, and they're included in the proposal that Andy has submitted, that will be, will get approval for, it doesn't mean that it's tied to that, we still have flexibility to move monies around. But in concept, there are funds in there to help teachers and help our kids, help our paraprofessionals, help our whole school communities take more advantage of the opportunities to learn outdoors, for the many reasons that it's good.
Let me just add something to that, just to add to that, that I think it's interesting, it's worth thinking of outdoor learning in two buckets. One is you go outdoors to learn about the outdoors, to learn about nature, that's predominantly a science exploration. But then there are plenty of other things that normally happen indoors, that could happen outdoors, that have nothing to do with science or nature. Plays, all kinds of social studies things, math, whatever. And so that's, I think, the whole area of creativity, that would be great to try and explore and help the teachers think about. The things that you used to do inside, well, let's see if we can do outside, because of all the advantages of being outside.
Just to get very concrete, that's how my brain works. The, when we look at two schools, the two districts as they're evolving, it seems that we have two slightly different pathways to do this. And I, I don't know if we've got a, need to write anything down concrete here tonight. But we've got, we have, we have the center in West West in addition to the facilities at the Westminster's Community School. And there's a lot of space over there, and something could be done. In Grafton, we have, Elise touched on the fact that we're re-envisioning what used to be a purely recreational space or playground area to be both playground and instructional integrated space. At least that was what I picked up from the discussion the other day, and I think we're still pretty rock stage with that. That's item A. And we also have the partnerships that we've had off and on for a number of years that maybe we need to nail down in much more specific terms. We've had an informal, we've had informal understandings with the Wyndham Foundation to let kids simply build their own instruction spaces out along the river, and they've been doing that for a number of years. And we have, we have an offer that I don't think it ever got in writing from the Nature Museum, going back to last summer and maybe before that, saying, we would really like to work with you during the school year and perhaps during the summer, to find ways to informally do things together. You know, people here in our community know I raised a flag about putting the community in community-centered education. And here's an, here's an opportunity to do that with domain specialists, who, that is their focus, is nature education. And they're, I could walk there in five minutes, and so we need to be looking at how to do that. I don't.
You're doing quite a bit already.
Well, we are, but you know, I just think that maybe some of the informal stuff maybe needs to get transitioned to some formal agreements where everybody knows what's expected, what will be happening, if there's monies exchanging, what they look like. But you know, let's just get this stuff nailed down a little bit more firmly. I don't think it's like, you know, something we have to do next week, but certainly over the course of the next year, I'd really would like to see these things. I'd like to see stuff that we can present to people and say, this is how we go forward, this is part of our long-term vision, so.
I just met with the Nature Museum today and had the almost exact same conversation that you're having right now.
Yeah, I'm not shocked by that, because I had this conversation last July with the folks over there just thinking ahead of time that we might want to do that. I'm wondering if, again, I'm going to go around the horn and see if people have questions to comment.
I was just going to add, Jack, to the resources that you mentioned, which are in our favor, in both in Westminster and in Athens and Grafton. And that is the human resource we have in Cheryl, who has devoted her career to outdoor learning and has written and contributed to books and is a national leader, and is a tremendous, tremendous resource in this field. And I know, Cheryl, that you're happy to contribute whatever, whatever you can in making this all that it can be in the two districts.
Well, actually, one thing I would add, and I think I was alluding to this a moment ago. I'm also looking at, even though this is a meeting of Athens, Grafton and Westminster, I'm thinking of the whole supervisory union. And we had a conversation at the ESSER committee meeting yesterday, where we talked a little bit about the other campuses. And it's my belief that we can enhance the opportunities for outdoor learning at every campus. The central school, the middle school, certainly Saxon River. And so because this is something that's good for all kids, and it also, you know, the evidence shows that it's really relaxing for teachers. It's good for, you know, in many ways, but not, I don't want, nobody wants this to be another initiative that somebody's required to do, especially as tired as so many folks are right now. So the spirit around it, and we've got some years to develop it, which is a great opportunity, is to enhance the environments and give people the support. I would also add one other thing to, a comment that David made. I actually am a part of a team from Antioch submitting a proposal tomorrow that is to fully develop a network that includes Wyndham Southeast, as well as Wyndham Northeast, as well as some friends over in SU, what do you call it, 89, the King area?
29.
29, thank you. And all the way over in Maine, we're looking at a kind of a regional approach to get this expertise shared more widely. We just really have a lot of great and talented people here, and if we can learn from one another and support one another, that's the spirit of that. So I'll keep you posted on what we're trying to do.
Cheryl?
Yes.
I just wanted to, piggyback real quick, I think Cheryl's spot on as far as, I mean, I'm all for new initiatives and everything like that. I think it's a tool that we can help our teachers add to their toolboxes when looking at instruction in different ways. But mostly it's a way of engaging students, so not every student engages in the traditional classroom. And so anytime we can find a way to get a hook for a kid to apply their learning or find a new way to learn. We all know, we've all had those squiggly kids in our classrooms or no love them, and they don't, but you put them outside and all of a sudden, they're a totally different learner, right? And all you've done is changed the environment, right? And you might be presenting the exact same material, but by changing the environment, you now engage the learner. I mean, today at the middle school, we had some re-enactment folks from Fort Number Four come and they were using the green space there, and they had a small tent and they had some pelts and then they had some axe throwing, you know, and, you know, and, yeah, I know, you know, but, but.
Nothing more reassuring.
But what was great was I stood there and nobody hit me, so, no. They, you know, these gentlemen had, these gentlemen were professionals and it was all set up with a lot of safety involved. But to watch students get so engaged in something and to then hear Mr. Kelly talk about what he talks about in the classroom and now how this is being applied. And now what he's going to do is kids come back into the classroom, they have this experience that's real. And now they can bring it, and I know like outdoor, you know, learning and nature learning is even more than that. But now you've just taken, you know, what kids are sitting in the classroom and they, they're bored, now they have this excitement. And watching kids like cheer for each other on this axe throwing, you know, and when they made it. Or to watch, and I am not exaggerating this, a dozen middle schoolers quietly engaged in listening to a gentleman talk about, you know, some of the equipment they would have used out on the frontier. And like, again, you put them back in the classroom and if they're standing up in front of the classroom, you got kids wiggling in their seats and everything. And that is the kind of, you know, taking that learning and engaging kids is what it's all about, so. I just wanted to put a shout out to Mr. Kelly, because that thing was awesome today, so.
Just a quick update, you know, I've had iterations of this conversation before with people. I've had bits, pieces with Elise from like years ago. I know that Wynne has talked about these issues with the authority that she brings to them. I think it's something that we're, we have strong sense that this is important for us. I mean, any, I'm a bit of a colonial history buff, and for literally a century, from about 1660 to about 1760, the frontier between French Canada, between Quebec and New England was Westminster. It was Westminster and the territory coming into Rockhampton, that was literally the line. That's the reason why Fort Number Four is there, because that was a territorial marker between the two. There's, you know, that one, and there was this large no man's land, and there was up in Albergue where those centuries, the line was for the, you know, that was not passed from Quebec's perspective. And this area was, the reason Vermont was founded, was because it was that no man's land, because nobody knew who owned the land. And so you had this very rough and ready, very independent, nothing changed there, culture for a century. If you don't realize this, 100 years it was like this. And we do need to have an understanding of that. And I think that natural world education ties to the culture of the region, tell us its origin. It explains a whole lot of the subsequent development of the area. And so I do think it's really important that we, that we find ways to bring all these pieces in. It's the reason why Vermont has this sensitivity to environmental issues that's unique. Because we had that, that we were different in that way. Anybody else got any questions? Because I know I'm going to monopolize this and I'm also of the time. Yeah, Melissa?
All right, I love the idea of using ESSER funds for nature-based education, place-based education, all that stuff. I'm just curious, also, I did a walkthrough of the school in Westminster, and there's a lot of things that are going to be needed. Is it covering those items for the schools to be in compliance with air circulation and all the new mandates on our buildings? Is that, are those funds still going to go to that stuff too, or no?
That's what the committee needs, one of the things that we are looking into is having a complete assessment done of all of our facilities, so that we know where we can target and distribute funds. And part of, there is an air quality grant that everyone's still waiting on, but depending on when that comes out, you know, we may have a bigger need, so we might need to use some ESSER funds for air quality. The key with ESSER is we always have to tie it back to COVID, and we always have to tie it back to the loss of learning and how we're responding to COVID. And so the example I usually lead with is something like a parking lot. Or let's say if we were going to, we wanted to repair a tennis court. We would have to justify to the state, how is that meeting those requirements? And so, so anything we try to do or want to do, we have to really kind of look at that lens. And we can't go around and say, oh, all the windows at Westminster need to be replaced because the, you know, we've failed to replace the windows for the last 10 years, so can we use these ESSER funds to do it? We could look at, we want to move the, you know, the main entrance windows and doors do not provide enough ventilation or controlled ventilation, so therefore we need to replace them to enhance our ventilation system, to help our air quality for, to alleviate COVID. So we've got to frame it in a certain way. We can't just say, wow, we didn't take care of our building for all these years, so now let's throw this money after it. Does that make sense, Melissa?
Oh, yeah, I completely get that. I was just wondering if some of the funds are also going to help because we have some substantial amount of work that needs to be done in Westminster.
Liz bangs that drum every time I talk to her, so, and Angela bangs her drum. So yes, all the principals are very much aware, Jim DeBel, who's here, in person, he's just hiding on cameras. It is on the job and we are, we're working on that. We just had a meeting today to kind of really finalize the need for this facilities piece, because it, we feel that it goes beyond even what Westminster had done, but really look at all that stuff and then really address where are those, where are those big needs? We do have to set some of the dollars aside with ARP ESSER to address loss of learning. But then the rest of the money has a little bit more flexibility, so.
I think, yeah, go ahead.
I just wondered if you could have Angela and Liz just share maybe some of what is going on now in the schools or place-based?
in the schools or place-based outside learning that's being, that's working? I'm just curious what's going on at this point into the winter, what will happen? Maybe see what they say.
Is that curveball sufficiently curvy that you can catch it?
No, I can address it. Liz, I can go first if you want. So each of our classrooms goes outside once a week for half of the day usually. And then in addition, going over to the nature museum, there's at least a class over there every week. I know that the money, we don't have a lot more money left. We usually have a donation right after the new year. So hopefully that comes in, but like Jack was saying, it would be nice if we could allocate money actually in our budget to be able to plan on using the nature museum more regularly. And then right now, as far as getting outside and being healthy during COVID, the teachers do go outside as much as possible. It is much harder now that it's getting colder to take that learning outside. I do think that professional development, like you were saying, Cheryl, is definitely necessary for teachers. I remember when I came here from Massachusetts, I was like, well, how do I do that? I remember saying that to Liz, like, well, how do I do that? So that's, I definitely think that that's a really smart move with that money, for sure. And then once it gets cold, the kids do still go outside. I don't know that there is as much like academics necessarily happening.
I was thinking a lot of just like taking a group out with snowshoes, using.
But more like, kind of like games to reinforce what they've already learned indoors. Probably not as much use of the picnic tables like they do now and not going down to the water like they do now because it'll be icy, of course, and then I, we will.
That doesn't stop the blast.
No, but we did, I know that Liz and I are both planning on having our specialists, well, I think it's, two of my teachers are going to be taking the kids out on Wednesdays to still do winter sports type activities, even though we're not doing winter sports like at Stratton.
Oh, you're not?
Yeah, we're not doing that.
That's what I was, one of my questions. So I used to help with the drop the pods, so.
Right. We did sort of toy around with maybe trucking over there one day and doing that, but, you know, we have that great space down in the field. And then there's a lot of trails that the kids can go on with snowshoes and things. So that's sort of our winter plan.
Do you have snowshoes in the school available for groups? That's good. That's great.
I have tons of trails.
Yeah, and I was going to add too that the Wyndham Hill Pinnacle Association is a huge resource that's local that if the schools could connect with that group and use those trails on the field trips.
That's a discussion that actually is an SU discussion because not only, I mean, people don't appreciate that you literally can get from here to Route Five and be essentially on trails the entire time. And that, that a big chunk of the entryways to Pinnacle Hill actually go through the high school. And we owe it to ourselves to have a discussion just about that issue. And we've had offers from Pinnacle for 10 years to find ways to make these connections and we maybe actually ought to do it. So that's a good thing. Melissa, putting you on the spot briefly before I get to Liz on this. Both Kathy Ciano, you and a couple other people of Suzanne Welch have said to me that we, we do need to get down to brass tacks. We get down to the discussion of, you know, where the money's actually going, what things need to get fixed, particularly in terms of identifying structural stuff. And I, and I, you know, you've run preschools, you get the administrative responsibility of that. And Kathy, very much a, you know, foot on the ground, let's, you know, let's lay this stuff out. And I think that I'm kind of looking forward to those discussions. We need both, you know, a plan and we need a long-term plan. And we, we have not done a lot of long-term planning around here in this. It's a real deficit and I'm hoping after budget season that we start dedicating some real time to doing that, that that's critical to going forward and not being reactive. Liz, I know you're up next. We've given you enough time to figure out what you want to say.
I just echo a lot of what Angela said. We have, our teachers are out with classes all the time in the garden and then in the woods behind, past our tree line. There's a whole spectrum of comfort in our staff. So I think the PD that Cheryl mentioned is really going to take away a barrier that some staff may see with accessing outdoor learning and making the most of the time out there and equipment, you know, making sure kids are, have the right gear to get out there and comfortable so that they're able to learn while outside. Our librarian position spearheads a lot of that with teachers taking classes out and helping teachers who are less comfortable out in the woods with their class. So that's really a point person in our building, but we definitely have classes and grade levels who are super comfortable going out there on their own without, you know, additional support. So, yeah, and of course, in COVID, people are out all the time for learning, but we have a lot of land and, Ginger, yeah, we have the equipment, the snowshoes and the cross-country skis and the ice skates that kids use throughout the winter. So they're outside. And I would probably echo what Angela said too about being outside in the winter. Well, it may be less academic, it's definitely more, you know, it's just more lessons around community building and creating and being together.
I would say good for mental health as well.
Yeah.
With people's permission, we have on our calendar, on our schedule here, lots of our nature-based outdoor learning, but we also have a sixth seat, which is to invite select board of other board members for Esser planning. And I, this feels like maybe we ought to move the MOU one down one and maybe continue this in terms of that. Because I think that it's a community-based discussion. And I'm wondering if, I don't know if I put this on or you did, Cheryl, but.
It wasn't me, but it's a good idea.
Then it might, it might have been me. Hope it was somebody. Thank you, Hank. The, and the question is, would we like to send out formal invitations to the three, three select boards and say that we would invite a conversation and have, and invite them to be part of our next set of discussions?
So we discussed this yesterday in our working group.
Yes, the one I missed.
Yes. I was going to say something smart, Jack, and I decided not to. And so I was going to start reaching out to community and inviting them in and, but also just talking with the folks who are a part of that working group of who would they recommend? We can do blankets to like select folks and blanket to businesses. But I also know that targeting certain, you know, a personal connection and having those conversations might go longer than just an email of an invitation. But we're at a point where looking at ARP-ESR and really talking about the bigger picture of need to engage more of our community to bring them in to be a part of that conversation.
I'm wondering, would it be useful to have a, to have this board make a formal invitation and then authorize you to, to work out the details of that arrangement? Essentially, I'm thinking that we would pass a resolution formally inviting, inviting select board. Select board is the three communities to join us in Esser planning and to authorize a superintendent to, to work out the details of that. Hoping perhaps it'd be either a select board meeting or more likely it'd be a joint discussion, they could come to this meeting. I just think it'd be a useful process. I'm going to make that as a, as a motion, because I don't know what else to do. And I'm wondering if there's any discussion about that, whether, if there's any questions about whether that's a good idea or not. I see one question.
It's just a question, what's the timeline on this? It's a great idea, but when does this have to be finished?
Well, so we don't have a timeline then and part of it goes back to this. So the state has to submit their plan to the federal government. They did that, it got rejected, which is not abnormal for states to get rejected. So they have to tweak it and they have to resubmit it. Until it gets submitted and approved, then they can't set their timelines for us for when things have to be done. I have a meeting with the state next week, it was the earliest we could all get together. You know, I was feeling a little anxious that we're, with some of our construction concepts, we haven't gotten those up yet. So we're a few months behind, you know, of where we probably should be. The state is aware of it, I've had enough conversations with them. I think they know the situation that we kind of walked into at the beginning of the school year, which kind of put us behind. But the ARP-ESR funds are good until September of '24. So, but a lot of it is infrastructure, which is why I think the community needs to be involved because we're talking about possibly altering or amending our plants, our facilities. And so therefore, that's a community effort. And, but it's going to take time because, and that's why, like we're talking about with Mr. DeBel, looking at our facilities and coming that way is because we have to identify the areas. We have to come up with what do we want to do? We have to apply for those, for an application. We have to wait for the state to, and they're turning them around really fast, so I don't want to badmouth the state. They are, they are turning those around really fast and then, and they're coming back with, you need more information or you're good to go. And then once you're good to go, the next step is you have to go to your, look at your historical pieces, right? You have to go through that kind of a process. Are you, you know, is this building, let's use this one as an example, are there any historical implications if we were to build out a foyer on here? And what is, what does that look like? Does it have to be certain brickwork? Well, you know, those kind of things. And then, once you've done that historical preservation piece, then you resubmit that. You're good to go, those folks give you the thumbs up. Then you get down to your project concept. And so then the AOE wants the kids more granular, give us more information on the project. And then you've got to get project approval. Once you get project approval, then you can start moving forward with the actual, you know, shovels to dirt, so.
Go ahead.
Are, are Esser funds specifically for educational institutions?
Yes. Well, I, the ones that we have available to us. I believe that there is recovery money that's targeted for other purposes that don't come through the education.
And so, so what I'm wondering then is, is the select board looking at another pot of Esser funds in regards to town halls or community centers or that kind of thing?
They could be, and I don't, I can't speak definitively on that, but just because I've listened to the news recently, like in New Hampshire, I know that the state decided to turn down certain dollars and it would have funded some of that, but I also had heard that certain organizations got dollars for mental health and things like that and it was all out of ARP-ESR and stuff like that that came through the state. So it all comes through the state, but it might be, the Department of Health might have gotten Esser funds, the Department of Commerce might have gotten Esser funds, so.
There are two different, you know, acronyms. There's CARES, Community Something or Other Relief Funds. There is, Esser stands for Elementary and Second Theory School, Something or Other Relief, and that's what that is. So Esser money is school money. Now, that doesn't mean that there aren't support things like, you know, social service stuff because as we all know, as David Clark always says, the schools are how we do social services for kids in the state of Vermont. They just kind of are. But with that said, this, this money is secondary school and elementary school. That's what it's for and it's all around making response to the COVID epidemic and the economic consequences of that, which do include the fact that communities have had a reduced capacity to pay for things because there was a recession as a consequence of COVID. But that's, that, that, just want to be sure, we throw around these acronyms and we don't know what they mean and I just want to make sure we're clear about that. I'm going to ask my colleagues that are online because I get a little confused sometimes. If you have questions, flash that famous hand sign that's, that's on your screen so that I don't fail to ask you because I always worry that I am not responding to questions you may have. So can you please do me that? And if I don't respond, just start yelling and we'll, we'll respond to that. Go ahead, Wade.
Yes, I'm sorry. So for those of you who may not know who I am, my name is Wade Kemp. I'm actually the maintenance director for the Westminster Center School in the West West School. I replaced Adam back in July. So I'm actually new to the school system. But with everything that's going on, from where my standpoint, being new to the school system with everything with Esser one, two, and three, I actually come from the, worked at Landmark College, so it was private, so private-public, a lot different. Between what my role is, what Jim's role is, what the admin's role is, is a little bit more confusing to me as being a new member, especially with everything moving forward. So if I could suggest that at some point, myself and he as he's the, as the superintendent and Jim and maybe the other directors can actually sit down and have a conversation where our role, admin's role, Jim's role, Esser role and everything else rolls in, I think that would be more beneficial moving forward, not just for us, but for our principals, just so we have an understanding of how we move forward and what you need as a board, what we need, what our principal needs as we try to get these projects completed moving forward.
Wade, you bring up an extremely good point. One of the things that we were saying, actually just before we started the formal meeting tonight, was that there really does need to be a discussion about integrating sort of the maintenance and the renovation vision for the, for the SU. You know, I'd said to, just before we came online to Jim, that, you know, one of the things that I think we're going to need access to is somebody that's a CCM, Certified Construction Manager, there are people that do nothing but schools. That is all they do. They do, they do school, they do school physical plant or they do, because it's a subsection, HVAC. That's all they do. And that kind of expertise, even a day's worth of that kind of, you know, help so you can know what questions to ask is a thing we need to do. And I do think that we need to have a broad discussion about whether the whole function of maintenance and renovation needs to be centered because I think it's really impossible for individual custodial maintenance staff to take on what is essentially a renovation project if you've never done it before. Actually, done some of it down at Landmark. But nonetheless, it's a, it's a different, it's a different bag for a whole lot of reasons. And it's important that you guys all work together and learn together what's going, how to do this.
Well, that's right. I mean, the general maintenance of a building is one thing, renovation is completely another.
Yep.
Permitting and everything else is completely different.
You bet.
Right, they're two different animals. But, so with our issues now in Westminster, which are issues that we have in real time.
Yep.
We're just basic mechanical functions of pumps and heating systems to make sure that our heating system is up and running for the schools just to operate so that we can heat our building. I mean, that, that has nothing to do with COVID. That has everything to do with just maintenance work that just happened.
Yep.
So I guess. So I guess as a maintenance director for my buildings, where my input and Jim's input and where it involves the superintendent and where it involves the principal, for me as a as a new employee of the SU is a little bit confusing. And I don't know, and I'm not going to speak for the other directors because they may or may not know, but how our roles, Andy, unfortunately, as as an interim, and Jim's role, and and I won't speak for Jim because.
He'll speak for himself.
But how we work as a unified group just to accomplish what needs to happen in each individual building. Jim's responsible for all the buildings. We're responsible for individual buildings. But it sounds like we're all supposed to work as a unified group.
Well, I think that's called, you'll have that, in the sense that this is an area that was sort of identified this summer. You know, whatever one might say about Chris and when they identified this as a screening requirement. And I think that this is still a TBD in terms of development. I'm seeing Jim nod sagely on this. And and I would just, I would ask everyone, including our boards, to be at least semi-patient, but not too patient because we do need to get the show on the road. But I think your comments are appropriate, timely and well.
Hey Charlie.
So Charlie, we have, sorry, we have, no, I was going to say, we have a, no, we had a second comment, you know, treaty comment. So thank you.
One last thing before I before I mute myself and you guys can continue is when it comes to these ESSR three funds, if there's any kind of guidelines or literature that Liz and myself can can review so we know when we look at projects moving forward, they fall within those guidelines, that would be extremely helpful to both of us as we not only plan for ESSR three funds, but we plan for our capital projects moving one, two, three, four years ahead.
Go ahead. Andy.
Yeah. So so Wade, I think I think there's there's obviously a lot of complexity here and you bring up some valid points. I think one of the things that I've really tried to strive to kind of push, and it hasn't gotten out to all the different getting everyone together, and I think that's a good thing, is we don't really have those three, five-year capital improvement plans. And that I know of, I can't put my my fingers on.
They do not exist, I promise.
And and the idea of how that works is is if we had that plan, we could already be sitting down, looking at ESSR funds and seeing how to, can ESSR help cover any of those plans? And and I think that's the the piece that we're now, when I say we're kind of behind in looking at it, is are there certain things? So so if we take a look at your building and we know like there's there's some roof issues, right? Well, if the roof is leaking and 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 kids can't learn, can't be in the building and learn, that could be an ESSR issue. And so that's where that that this kind of massaging back and forth. Your boiler issue that I think we'll have to get to tonight. That that boiler issue, ESSR funds, by the time we get around to those ESSR funds, a couple of winters will have passed. And 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 so and so we know that that's something we can't pivot very quickly on. That's a that's a maintenance of, you know, main maintenance of effort issue of maintaining the building kind of thing. So so those are the kind of things that we have to kind of have those longer discussions. And that's that's where Jim helps that bridge, right? And and so, but I think we, I think you bring a valid point that we need to all come to the table and and get a common understanding.
Right. I just, I mean, as you all know, and I know, and Liz and the principal of Grafton knows is if you have that initial conversation where everybody understands where they stand and what they need to bring information-wise to that table, then we can narrow those avenues and we can just bang one project out after another.
Yeah. And and it's, I think it's part of the learning curve as we start to talk about consolidations, where earlier in the in the discussion was about consolidation of the specialists. And then we talked about custodial consolidating, or we've even talked at times about IT consolidating at the SU level. There's that push and pull, right? Because it's always been very localized. And if you go to consolidate it, what do you gain? What do you lose? So anyway, I'll be quiet.
Gentlemen, just because it's important and I've recognized time is of the essence. At 7:15, we have a motion on the floor, I still believe, which is to formally invite the selectors of the three towns and to authorize a superintendent pass to make arrangements for that to happen. And I want to stay on that subject. Are there any further discussions on that part of it? And if not, I'm going to ask for call the question and ask for roll call on that.
Not to belabor it, but I honestly think it would be more effective for us to take on the board, to take on the role of inviting the select boards of our our towns to participate in a particular board meeting or or attend by Zoom when we when we say we're going to talk about ESSR funds, just because we have personal relationships with residents of the town.
I don't think it's necessarily either or. I was just thinking that rather than have us individually try to do that, that there be a single person, point person, I I think it'd be phenomenal if, you know, if say you and Cheryl talk to the folks at in Westminster and, you know, maybe Justin and I do the same thing, Grafton and and my ladies on the left have that conversation with folks in Athens. But I think that, you know, just somebody to corral the whole thing and say, we're doing it on date X, and this is what we're going to talk about, that's a superintendent thing. I don't think the two are separate. Is that okay with everyone? All right. Then with that noted, I'm going to call the question and and go around the room. And let's start with with Ginger.
I agree that we should do that.
All right. I got an agreement from, I'm going to do the Graft, the USED, whatever it is, board, and then what the Westminster folks do it. Melissa, what say you? Yay or nay? All right. Elise, yay or nay?
Yes.
All right. Jessa?
Yes.
All right. So we got one board on the favor written. You can ask your board now.
Charlie?
Yes.
Steven?
Oh, yes.
And me, yes.
All right. So that that's been done. We have a six B that we moved, memorandum of understanding. And I'm going to, we're going to start getting really quick and dirty here for the time. Andy, what's what's the latest on this MOU that keeps on getting revised and revised, you know, and what do we got?
So I I worked quite closely with the association to try and keep revising an MOU that would mandate vaccinations for staff, for not only teachers, but for support staff and work out some of the structural details around it. If a teacher were to be vaccinated and were to contract COVID and unable to work remotely from home, which many of our teachers have been doing, you know, that we wouldn't be, that we would support them by not making them take sick days to take those days because they've done everything we've asked them to do kind of thing. So so that that's probably the meat and potatoes. Many of our support staff, this is really designed around supporting our support staff because many of our support staff, when they come on, they don't have as many sick days banked as as a lot of our teachers. But also, we have some, you know, the the big fear is this fear continues to go through us is we have, you know, if a teacher, let's say, has to go out for some reason, and then they come back, and then they have to go out again. And then maybe they're really sick and they have a real reason, like to be out. And then we depleted our days. And so this covers that. It also allows us to create just a form that we should have anyway, but we haven't had, that helps us, the the teacher, to denote those days so that we can come back to the boards and the teacher doesn't have to come and, you know, unbend a knee kind of thing and ask to have these days returned to them. It just is more of a creates a formality piece of it.
Do we have a, I mean, I don't think it's absolutely screaming necessary, but do we have a text that we can that everybody has to make sure that, you know?
We did pass around the MOU.
I just wanted to make sure everybody got to see it.
And of course, because because I was.
I've seen at least a couple of iterations of this, and I just want to make sure that everybody.
I think Nicole sent it to us.
Okay. I will, I will have to do a mea culpa because I ran out of the office at the last minute. I had, so so far Rockingham has, that board has agreed and signed. The high school agreed and signed. The SU board last night agreed and signed. And I was supposed to bring it tonight to have, if you guys agreed to it, to sign it. So I'll have to figure out that signature piece if we go that way. I have the copy with everyone else, every board signature on itself.
So I will be looking for a resolution, which I'm thinking, I'm seeing a hand up to make it perhaps, actually, there's going to be a question.
Oh, okay. Well.
I understand there's much water under the bridge and it's probably too late, but I don't see any mention of mandatory testing in this.
Yes, there is. There is testing. And so so if if a staff member, let me find the verbiage.
If it's in there, that's fine. I just couldn't find it.
Yeah. So so if if a staff member, for some reason, is unvaccinated or, I'm going to say, does not feel that they want to share their vaccination card with us. And there are some that for personal reasons, they don't want to do that. We consider those folks to be unvaccinated still. And so therefore, then they have to submit to weekly PCR testing. And it is under, it's under, let's see, it's it's under vaccines. And I believe it is the third bullet. So they're required every seven days to to have a PCR test completed. And we do that through our surveillance testing, which we do with the state.
So just to try to do the old Robert's rules, the idea is I'm looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding and to authorize the chairs' quarrel to sign on behalf of the boards' quarrels. So that's the, do I have, is that handed this night?
I'm approving such a motion, yes.
I actually think we're not listed, and this is what it's only the union.
We did not list Westminster. I had a conversation with Cheryl because because it's not budgetary.
Then 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 deleting the quarrels there, I need a, I need a, yeah, thank you. That's that's what I needed. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm just looking at this. It says under vaccines, like the fourth bullet down, third bullet. If the state of Vermont were to see surveillance testing and free testing is no longer available, the employer will pay for testing. Who's the employer? The SU or? I mean, it's it's expensive.
Yes, I know.
So where is that coming? Where does that money come from?
Because under the test to stay program, what we will have, which is funded through the state, there will be many options to continue to continue that on.
But it says if they don't offer free testing anymore, that like, does that mean it'll come out of Grafton's budget? $150 a task? Just curious because that could get, that could get a little, little crazy.
So so in theory, yes, this MOU does sunset at the end of this year and does not continue on beyond this year. So.
In fact, that was a discussion we had whether that was a good idea or not.
So so therefore, given the information that I've gotten from the secretary, I do not anticipate that that would be a long term. However, that would be a usable expense under ESSR.
Which is the reason I didn't worry about it initially.
So therefore, no, we would not look to charge back every single.
Unless you don't want to.
If we're paying $150, we're doing it wrong, by the way.
Yeah, I was going to say, it should be, the the numbers I got, at least in Massachusetts, were around 40, which I hope is more more reasonable. In any case, the one thing I was assured by when I made a few phone calls to Washington about this was if there was ever a use for ESSR money that would not be subject to any questions at all, it was going to be this. And so I'm feeling comfortable about it. I'm, I, I, any other, anyone else have questions? Because otherwise, I'm going to do a quick roll call of.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
I want to make sure I have the most recent revised edition. Was it 10/14?
Yes. And just on the last piece, there's already a strategy in the grant Angela for that, to cover that. So.
All right. So I just think through my. So doing a roll call of our members exclusively, what say you, Ginger?
Could you just state what?
We are approving the memorandum of understanding and authorizing chair of the board, our board, to sign on behalf of the board.
I agree.
All right. Melissa?
I'm going to abstain.
All right. Elise?
Yes.
And Jessa?
Yes.
All right. So that has occurred and we're done on that one. We had a, what was the other, I this, I said I was going to ask somebody for what the two.
Negotiations and town meeting.
All right. Town meeting, and this was something that you brought up. And I want to make sure we're we're touching the same issue. It's occurred to me at least, that we have this kind of oddball situation where town meeting, we're electing board members. Grafton Athens is electing board members. And at the same time, what happens to the Westminster folks that are on the board? Because we're going to need to, we're going to need to do one of a couple of things. We need to, we need to revise the Articles of Agreement to reflect our new architecture. But we also need to have, make certain that Westminster is represented in the months between March and July 1st on our board. And I think that at least one term, and I think it might be yours, Melissa, ends in March. So we have to figure out what that looks like. And I'm wondering if it's, is that what you were going to bring up or you got something else?
Something else. Oh, good.
I can speak to that.
All right.
And that I talked to Sean Tui, who I often have as counsel for these matters. And Melissa, you had asked the question, what happens to my term? He answered the question, your term is still complete as of the town meeting. I said, well, what do we do about that? I mean, does this board select somebody? He said, no, we actually need to have someone run for that position between March and June 30th.
So we have to set up a, in the Articles of Agreement, we'll have to have provision for that and have that be a thing.
And that would be all three towns, again, would vote for that position with the understanding that that term would be complete July 1, when the Westminster Board has authority. Elise's seat, she stepped into to complete my term.
Right.
So that takes her through.
Well, actually, I think it technically, I'm not sure it does because this is, this is why I get concerned that, certain period. But traditionally, and we're not good at this across the SU, is when we point somebody on an interim basis, theoretically, according to the Articles, that term ends as of the next election. With that, those are, those are supposed to be vacant and are supposed to run for that. Because we have that issue with the high school board where we have an, our absence rep should have been subject to a vote last March.
But she's completing a term that's not yet complete. It hasn't expired.
Even something.
I'm not aware of that. We should ask the attorney.
All right. But but in any case, we will, we need to do two things. And we need a committee to tidy, to to write, to to write the new Articles of Agreement and to have this proviso in it. One. And two, we need to, we need to make certain that when we put out our two. And two, we need to, we need to make certain that when we put out our two warnings, that this item is listed in it so that everybody knows. I suspect it's going to be like a separate ballot sheet just for this position, or, or position. But, and I know Melissa's suggested that she has a life. And I'm not sure if she's planning on running or not, but it didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't getting strong vibes that that was part of her plan.
Well, I thought it was useful that Sean Tui said that her term is completely in March.
Yeah.
She would choose to run again or, or not, but there needs to be an election, even though that term will be ended.
Okay. Now, I, I understand that that election has to take place in all three towns.
Right.
Is that from an Australian ballot at that Tuesday? Or is it from the floor whenever the WNEUSD annual meeting takes place?
I would, I would assume, and this is adding a layer of complication that, you know, even I wasn't sure about, is I, I, I think it would be easier if it was held as a, as an Australian ballot for the following. That you, I, I'm not always sure, I'm not completely sure that you're holding your town meeting on the same day that Athens and Grafton are, are you?
We are not, but Athens and Grafton, I don't believe, will have anything to do with the WNEUSD annual meeting. That that is their town meetings.
Right, but with the, the, the working plan, to the extent that we can call anything a working plan, was until this came up, that we would do a, a joint meeting on the same day, similar to what you would do for Westminster traditionally, which was we would have, you know, we would always say there is a meeting of the town and district of, of Athens. And that we would probably try to do some version of this to connect the two towns together during a town meeting. That, and that's, I haven't got formal, that's okay from Will sending. But that was my plan until this issue came up. And now it feels a little gamey to me, but it feels like that's the way to solve it. Because this is a special action for a special kind of representative. And it needs to be part of the, of the text of the revised, of the revised interim, or revised articles of agreement that we have this ninety days roughly between March and, and July one. That we have this appendage, you know, don't want anybody to feel like I'm describing them as appendix. The, but we have this transitional, transitional member.
Yeah. Plainly, you would get much more people if you attended, if you could have it somehow or other joined with your town meetings.
Yeah.
Athens and Grafton, just like Westminster's school district meeting will be combined with its town and fire district meetings. And that tends to get in Westminster, you know, a hundred, several hundred, three hundred people. Much more than the three people or whatever who come to the high school board.
One of, we all, you know, I, I, the vision here is that that's how this works. The, the question is, does it square with making certain that you're not obligated to have your meeting on the same day that Athens and Grafton are having their meetings just so that we can all have now a three-way, you know, a three-way live meeting, which I'm not even sure logistically how to do quite yet. From a, from just a sheer logistic simplicity issue, I would be very much in favor of having that be an Australian ballot slot. And that would be the last of the Australian ballots hopefully going forward. That won't, you know, it won't affect like your approval of your budget, because that's yours, that's Athens, Grafton. It won't affect any other stuff you might have on, that, that are school related, because you're going to have your own list, we'll have our own list. But there'll be this one, you know, there'll be this one transition or one, possibly transitional figures.
I'm going to suggest, unless Sean Tui would say this can't be, I would suggest the, the WNEUSD board just appoint someone from Westminster.
He said it had to be an election, that's what he said yesterday. That's what he said yesterday. And he said Australian ballot. And we also talked about the election of the Westminster board members, which will be on Australian ballot while we do the other business of the school district at town meeting. Because that's the way it's been done, historical precedent. You know, that it's been Australian ballot for our elected board members. So David, we would have a ballot for the Union Elementary School District for that incomplete term. Maybe it also would include the other, anybody else who's up for election. And I think, I think because we still have to have Westminster vote with Athens and Grafton on, on that.
Well, my, yeah, my hope was that this would be a separate piece of paper, because, you know, because otherwise it doesn't, it'll get nuts.
Right, exactly. And then I want to just finish this thought. And then separate from that, there will be a ballot for everybody else in Westminster, including the town school board.
I'm.
All right.
Unless there is a screaming objection, and there might be. It is my plan to appoint some folks from both communities to get this together. So that, and I'm going to assume you're going to do some things. You, you already have articles of agreements, you're not going to have to modify.
We don't have to have articles of agreement because we are a town district. You do because you're two towns. I asked him that yesterday.
Thank you. Somebody's been doing my work, thank God.
We're just together.
Yeah.
Because someone emailed, can you share the correspondence with Sean Tuni, just so we have it?
Yeah, we should have it on the record.
It was just by phone.
Okay, could you check in with Nicole and I? Thank you, just so we, we want to make sure we capture everything.
Maybe also an email of the narrative, sending it to, to you, to me and a copy.
You say you put something in writing and just happened.
I know, to Sean, but just so we have, we have some guidance, because we need to get rocking and rolling, because we need to have this done at the same time we have all the budget stuff presented.
Okay.
We're going to be literally November is going to be a busy month, because I'd like to get all this nailed down.
David, do you have any other questions?
Yes, and I, I should say that I sat down with Fletcher today. So, and Fletcher, contrary to what Sean Tui said, said. Just elect the new board members from the floor.
But that's for your members, right?
What's that?
That's for, that's for the new members.
For the Westminster board members. He said, that's the fallback. And Sean Tui said, well, the historical precedent was Australian ballot. Fletcher Proctor said, the fallback is unless it's, unless a town has voted to elect their officers of one sort or another, school district or otherwise, by Australian ballot, the fallback is, it's they're elected from the, from the floor. Now, in the past, Westminster did elect to have its school district members elected by Australian ballot. I suppose we could say that that vote carries forward.
As recently as June, when you, Charlie and I were elected.
Right, well, that's right.
Australia.
This is, this will get funky for Athens and Grafton. And that Athens and Grafton have elected from the floor on many occasions. But assume it, but the, we are still that union unified, help me, district. Thank you, thank you, union district. And as such, during the period of our union district, we've always elected via Australian ballot. I would, I'm hoping that my correspondent with Will sending to get that changed. Because he, you know, Fletcher and Sean notwithstanding, the guy that gets to make the rules is Will. And, and, you know, if he says it's cool, everybody else will say it's cool too. And that would be, if you have some questions about that, that's where I would go to resolve any, any, you know, query on the subject. And he really does turn around and answer questions. So that would be a thing.
And then just one other thing, which is that the town clerk also asked, town clerk's office in Westminster also asked, who would be moderating, how do, how do we come up with a moderator for the town school district meeting? Because we elected a moderator for the fire district in March and for the, for the town, but we did not elect a moderator to run the school district meeting. Fletcher's answer to that was at the town meeting, you ask for nominations to be moderator and you elect right then and there, at the beginning of the school district meeting, you elect.
Sounds good.
That sounds good to me, and I can, I can reply to the town clerk about that.
So we, we beat this particular horse and, all right, good, good. That, that's one, I don't want to, but you may, you may get a request or I may actually call you in vague in terms of the, the Athens graph articles. I've got some draft stuff that I did like six months ago and I haven't looked at it since. But you might be able to use it as at least a reference point. So I want to get this, this done sooner rather than later, just so it's settled. And thank you for bringing up this whole issue, because it really shocked me by surprise.
And it's really important that we keep our town halls, town, town offices informed about this, because they have to put together the town reports, to the warnings and the ballots and everything else.
I just sent a, a report to, to Crafton. And I'm going to send an amendment, because I didn't know any of this stuff. And we'll do something, we'll put something together to send to Athens, like the ESEF. Okay, all the sixes are done, right? So we're on to seven? All right, let's talk, it's, it's really late, we're going to have to, budget planning process. I don't see, Forrest, Forrest still here. Do we know when we might see some hard, do we, I think we've touched on this. Do we see some hard numbers soon on budget, on these budget proposals? Do we have a date when that's going to happen? So we can, you know, do a full review?
I, I think what we kind of talked about was setting up some budget committee meetings outside of the regular.
Right.
Budget thing, and so we want to set some dates that can.
The, the, the date of our normal, the, the first of the two meetings that we have each month.
You want to just set that as a core budget committee?
Right, and, and the question is going to be whether or not, in your judgment, that's going to be enough? Because I always worry.
Well, Angela's not here, so I'm going to say yes to that.
Always good, it's always good when they're not here to contradict you.
I don't see Liz up there, oh, there she is. So I was going to say Liz.
We speak real fast, she won't have a chance.
I think, I think we could get you some harder numbers by that.
All right, yeah.
Keep in mind that we're making budgets for what will be separate school districts. So probably it makes sense for the Westminster board members to meet with Liz. You know, maybe we're in that corner of the room and you guys can meet.
Yeah, I would assume we do breakouts.
Or something, or, or, or during the day.
I assume we'd be doing breakouts for this, and that would be the process. And, and the mechanics of doing that, I haven't, I, I know you can do meeting room stuff on, on Zoom.
Peking.
Well, we'll have to figure out how to do that. Probably means that we have to have, bring in, bring in my PC or something for one of the rooms and have everybody have the screen or something.
We'll make it work.
Okay, but it was just, I, I was confident that we could. So next, our next normally scheduled meeting, we'll all meet in Westminster. We will have breakouts for the two spaces, and that's how we're going to rock and roll. And hopefully we'll get the bulk of this stuff nailed down at that time.
It would be November eleventh? We went to November nine.
Right.
I need confirmation from Nicole, it's the ninth.
And so there was a.
Was that the SU? When was the necessary attempt?
No, because the SU meeting was on the campus. So our budget meeting would be Tuesday, November nine, with the breakout rooms you guys just described, at the Westminster school. Okay?
All right, and I, and I want to get, want to make sure that we send stuff out to people about that. But Elise, to the slide boards and your various email chains and all that.
I don't know where we are in the agenda, but.
Good, because neither do I.
But I realize that.
It's an exception.
We don't have on the agenda, but I think we need to discuss tonight the current maintenance issue at Westminster that needs to be addressed, which is why I asked Mr. DeValle to be here, but also Wade's here and Liz is here. And that is my own fault for not catching that.
Let's do that right now.
Sorry about that.
So.
We'll share those.
As I was going, as I was looking down the agenda and I've seen that we're getting towards the end, I was like, oh my gosh, I, I apologize for that. I did tell, I did say to Mr. DeValle, I would try and have him go early so that he could get home.
And I thought, I thought.
I just thought you were just here for good luck.
Well, I thought you were here just in case about ESSR and coordination. Well, guess what happened while you were gone? You don't know what you've agreed to, we're going to leave it that way.
Liz will tell me.
Yeah, so go ahead, why don't we, what's up?
All right, so I'll just speak for Wade and Liz, because they have this situation very well. They're dealing with a failure of heat pump circulators. One electric motor, one impeller, which means that they're having trouble getting water through the system. They're dealing with a failed fill valve for the system. They're dealing with a failed zone valve in their dining room, as well as a unit ventilator that's having issues. What that means is Wade right now is running it manually. And Mother Nature has been good to this point. I hope she's not listening. But they do have it well in hand, so that's kind of a quick update on the Westminster issues.
No, I think there's more to it. And I think Liz and Wade could speak too, there's some fiscal issues.
Right.
Is that correct? So.
So, yeah, I'll raise my hand. I can't, I can't figure out how to do it on Zoom, so I'll just. Jim, Jim pretty much explained it pretty well in its most basic point. So our school has two heating plants, one is a wood boiler, one is a, which is a Messer Smith. The other one is a Will McLean, it's oil fired boiler. And they're both used to do the same exact thing, which is to heat hot water and then pump it throughout the system. We have two main pumps, circulator pumps, heating pumps, that send that out throughout the rest of the school. Both pumps are, are no good. I'm running one on fifty percent. The other one, I might manually run every now and then while I'm there to help the other one out, but it leaks out a lot of water. The other issue is the valve that Jim was just talking about, which dumps water into the system to make sure that it's pressurized, because you have to have pressure throughout the system to send it from the boiler throughout the entire building and back to the boiler to reheat. So you got your supply and then you have your return. That's not allowing water in. So any kind of water that I lose throughout the system is not being dumped back into the system, which means that I can't properly keep my system pressurized, which allows me to push enough water throughout the building to keep it, to keep it heated. Go ahead, you have a question?
Yeah, okay, so got the basics, pretty, pretty simple. The part of this was basic is what do we need to fix it, how soon do we need it, and what's it going to cost?
How do I need it? I need it now.
Yeah, I get that part.
Okay, how much is it going to cost? Jim had asked for twenty five thousand, which would cover everything, which would be a very good number. Can we do it for less than that? We can. But twenty five thousand would literally fix all of our problems and get us to exactly where we need to be. Can I do it for twenty? Can I do it for fifteen? By cutting some corners, yes, but twenty five, I can do everything for twenty five.
Okay, next, next.
Would be incentives on that too, through efficiency reform?
Well, the, the question I've got on this is certainly, you know, fixing it is better than not fixing it. Fixing it properly is better than doing, you know, an informal repair, shall we say. Fixing it properly is better than doing, you know, an informal repair, shall we say? The question's gonna be $25,000. You, we had a very brief discussion about this last year. And that, it was considered faulty. And, yeah, but it wasn't in anybody's budget. So we don't have $25,000 in the line item. So the question becomes, is this something we can charge and pay some this year, some next year? Is this something that's gonna have to be paid in cash right up front? Because it would be a lot easier if this could be spread over a couple of years. It'd be a lot harder, because I don't know where it's coming from, if we have to cost $25,000 out of the budget that we're two-thirds expended already for the commitments.
Right, and when I first approached Andy with this one, I had Esser in mind. Not, right, not really having a clear understanding of the Esser part of it. As has been noted, efficiency Vermont will offer incentives for stuff like that, but you have to upgrade for energy efficiency in order to utilize those. So.
So I guess my bottom line is, is there a way to spread this thing out so we can do it properly without blowing up budget into absolute shreds? Because there just isn't $25,000 there.
I'd get Wade's input on that. If you do a pump, I mean, that's one way, but Wade's got a way better understanding of it.
So Jack, so Jack, the way it works is, on our heating system is, ET plant has a pump that dumps it into the main loop. So, and there's two pumps there. Both pumps are bad. We can get away with one pump for this winter. For this fiscal year, we can get away with one pump. But you're gonna make that pump work the whole winter. And then we can replace the second pump in the next fiscal year. So you can, instead of doing $14,000, you cut that down to $7,000. Okay? If that helps you out.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just.
Ask Liz about the budget.
Liz, Liz talked about, you know, is there a way to make this work this year? Have you had a discussion about this?
Wade and I have been in constant discussion about it, actually. Cut me up at night. And whenever one says, "It's a little cold in this building," I'm like, does that mean there's no heat? I think that if we replace one pump, I think there's a possibility that it won't affect our bottom line. I think. And then, but I was interested in what Vermont Efficiency had to offer, and I wasn't sure, because I emailed Wade and Jim and the woman from Vermont Efficiency earlier this week about opportunities for funding. So I was more interested in exploring that before I was really ready to commit to stretching our budget to the max.
Jess has got her hand up, and then I'm gonna ask you another question. Jess, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if the system is leaking water inside the building when it runs, that would be a mold risk, which is a respiratory issue, which Esser funds. New cover.
So Jess, I am not disagreeing. I think the question that we may have to look, so right now, Esser 1 and Esser 2 have been submitted for review and approval. And so whenever, so they're kind of tied up in that. Esser 3 isn't even open. So the only thing we could do to look at Esser, if we were to access Esser 2 funds, is to, I can query the AOE to see if they can either speed up that review process or just return it. Getting it returned when it's in the review process is actually challenging.
Not a good idea at all.
It's just, I, it's been, but we might be able to, be able to find, I'm sorry?
I didn't know how specific our application was for HVAC, or if you just said HVAC.
So right now in Esser 2, there isn't any HVAC in there because what we would have to do for this, because of the dollar amount, we would probably have to submit a construction grant, request an application for construction. But I would have to check with the AOE on that. Because it gets, they just get touch in. So what I do is I usually query the AOE, say, hey, we got this problem. I need to do a construction app, or can I just get through it?
Unless we can get the cost of one pump down under the construction limit.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna run a circle here. I don't want, I don't want to cut you off, Jess, if you have more questions here, because I want to get to Liz, I want to get to Wayne, and I want to get to David, in that order. Are you, are you good, Jess? Okay, then on to Liz, next.
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to mention that I don't believe Esser is a reimbursable grant, and we need these upgrades as soon as we can. So I don't know if Esser is a great avenue to go down just because of the time.
All right, Wade?
All right, so I just, I just want to make sure that you guys all understand the situation that the Westminster School system or the Westminster Center School is in as of right now. So like I said, we have two heating plants. One is a wood chip boiler, the other one is an oil burner boiler. So we can't run our wood chip boiler right now because we have an actuator that is failed. So, which provides air that goes in, oxygen, blah, blah, blah. All right, so I can't run my wood chip boiler as of right now. So I'm running everything off of our oil burner furnace, which is our backup, which is burning about a tank of fuel, about 250 gallons a week. And we've only budgeted $1,000 for the year for that, FYI. But that's what we're running right now, because I can't run our wood chip boiler.
So we're gonna blow, we're gonna blow a hole no matter what we do, is really, unless we get this worked out.
I mean, depending on how you guys play with money, that's not my expertise. How you play with money is not my expertise. But I can't run our wood chip boiler, which is what is, the building is designed for. I have to run our backup system is what I'm doing. But no matter what system we run, if we don't fix either of those pumps, it doesn't matter, because that's what runs the hot water throughout the entire building.
Got it. All right, David?
Yeah, thanks, thanks Wade. I was just, I have the figures here for what was budgeted for building operations for the year.
Thank you.
And also what has been spent. Just without a calculator, just looking at it, somewhere in the neighborhood of $120,000 it was budgeted for building operations. And we have spent over that at this point. And the, and the main reason it looks like is the heating bill is, well, maybe, we've spent maybe four times as much as what's budgeted. And so, and I put it this way, it looks like, and I could be wrong because I'm just assuming that that's the heating, actually means heating, but it looks like we've spent $80,000 on fuel. Does that make any sense? No?
That makes no sense whatsoever.
No, that is because we had the lightning strike. And so there was $40,000 worth of damage in the lightning strike, which is reflected on our budget. So it looks like we've overspent, but that doesn't reflect the reimbursement through the insurance.
Okay, great.
So we're not, so I just want to clarify that.
Okay, but I, it should be said that spending a tank of fuel every week quickly will eat up the cost of repairs. And it makes a lot more sense to get the wood boiler going so that we're not spending a thousand bucks a week on oil.
Especially money we don't have. All right, so.
Is to make sure that that building is ran the way it was engineered to run.
My, yeah. I think we're in violent agreement, I could be wrong. We're in violent agreement that the, that it needs to be fixed yesterday. So the question is not whether we're fixing it. The question from my perspective is how we're financing it. The question about that is whether or not we're writing a check that we can't cover for a cash to do it, or whether there's some way of spreading the cost out over more than one year. Because that would be easier to budget for, and frankly, you know, that makes more sense to me anyway. But I don't know if that's doable. So the question is, is that doable? Is there, can we have people come in? Can we, because we, I don't, I think we have pretty limited borrowing authority unless we're writing bonds here. But I want to know if we have a line of credit or if there's some way of doing this.
If you, I think Laura's still on to it.
Yeah, or if you're around, do you know the answer to this? And also, what do you need from us tonight? We need an authorization.
Hello?
Yeah, Laura, apparently we're about to blow a hole in our heating budget, either because we aren't fixing it or because we are fixing it over in Westminster. So now that we've established that we've got a hole, the question is, if we fix the system over there, is there a way to fix it without just writing a check this year? Is there a way that we can get this thing spread out over more than one so we can temper that a little bit and put it into a budget?
If it is fixed this year, it will hit the budget for this year. It wouldn't be something that we will spread.
Well, I'm just wondering, can other contractors, it'll take this in pieces, or a bank that will allow us to, you know, we have a line of credit that allows us to spread this over more than the next nine months?
Then as well, the question will be is, since this is a Westminster and you guys are graft, then are you gonna be using, you know, funds from where? If we do the fixing this year, that will be this year's expenses. But then if you're trying to split it throughout the years, it will this year hit a portion of the unit elementary's budget, but then next year it's just gonna hit only Westminster?
Well, that, you know, that's a subject that's clearly subtext, but it's not core. I'm just concerned that I'm very allergic to running deficits. And we can run a deficit that we can't spread if we just use a system that sounds like it's gonna break anyway under the impact we just ran through oil. Or we can fix it, which seems like the obvious solution. But if we can fix it, it would be nice if, A, we could spread that cost over two years so that it isn't as small a hole in our budget. And, yeah, I suppose, you know, Athens and Grafton would pay less, but that wasn't really where I was coming from here. It was mostly, I want to be able to manage this and see if there's a way to spread it over two years rather than one. And I don't know if we can, do you have a line of credit with a bank? Because this is what, $25,000 minimum, did you say?
No, not $25,000, $25,000 maximum.
All right, well, let's play with $25,000 maximum, because I don't want, you know, doing it halfway is just a bad idea because it always means you spend more money. So let's just assume $25,000. Laura, I got a $25,000 hole. Is there a way I can spread this in two years?
Yes, you can spread it in two years. But honestly, according to what we have right now for expenses and revenue for the past year, there should be no reason why you guys wouldn't be able to cover it this year. Even though, you know, the budget will go over maybe by that amount, it will still have the revenue to cover it.
Well, what I would, what I would suggest here is that we pass a resolution authorizing, authorizing y'all to fix this thing for an amount up to $25,000. And that we also authorize Laura and Andy to develop a payment plan, if possible, that goes over more than just this question. Because we might be able to do it theoretically, Laura, but we got a whole lot of year to go left with other things that could blow up, break, fall down, God knows what. I don't, and I don't want to, I don't want to eat a hole that we might not be able to fill.
Jack, I, keep in mind that the year ends in the end of June. It's not ending in a month or two.
No, I'm very much aware of that.
The fiscal year that we're talking.
Right, I'm just, I'm thinking that if, $25,000, if it was your house, is something you might want to spread over more time. I don't even know if it's possible. I know that we've got to, we've got to authorize getting it fixed. I'm simply saying, if there's a way to amortize this over a longer period, we might come back here and ask everybody to approve that as well. And they might, that might fail. You might want to have it all done now. But I just, I'd like to know if it's possible.
I just think that if you incur an expense in this year, you're going, you're going to. Yeah, if you would incur.
We've got to go somehow. What just happened?
Thank you.
I'm talking too much. If you incur an expense this year, even if you arrange to pay off in other years, that is going to be an expense in this year's budget. It just, that's just the way it works, I think. I don't think you can.
Well, I'd like to think back to this and see what's possible. You very well may be right, but I'd like to at least know. Okay, so I, I'm, again, looking for a motion to authorize the expenditure of $25,000 to repair the Westminster heating system and to authorize our business manager and superintendent to explore financial options and get back to us. And we'll know what we know. Yeah, that all seem reasonable?
Good motion.
Anyway, so that's it. Any further discussion on this point? And I think we'll need to have votes of why both boards, because after all, if there is a, if there is a way to spread it, that becomes your budget and you need to be okay with it. So.
I do have a question. Do you, there are two systems, as you said, and the wood chip system is not working. Is the $25,000 to fix the wood chip system?
Yeah, that was a pretty high shot to get everything done.
Well, so how do you fix the fuel backup one?
So he's missing a primary actuator for the boiler, for wood chip boiler. So if that one is fixed, he can heat off of that one. Use the oil as a backup as it's intended.
So there's nothing wrong with the backup system, it's just expensive?
That's correct, and distribution is the issue.
So it's really still $25,000 to fix the whole, the actuator for the wood chip system? Once that's fixed, then backup goes back to normal with only use in emergency.
Let's have Wade.
And we can chime in better on that.
Yeah, if I can, if I can chime in on that. So once we fix the actuator, there's another piece on there, a diaphragm, I won't go into detail. But once we get the wood chip boiler up and running the way that it is designed, then the oil burner setup will be our backup for in case any time that that wood chip boiler goes down. Now, off of that oil burner comes an ejector pump, which is also leaking, which is part of this fix, which leaks water. That water that leaks brings down the pressure in the system. We have a valve that is also failed that picks up any loss of pressure. So it's, it's a domino effect where, could you get away with one? Yes, but if you don't fix the other and you find yourself in that situation, you're in a bad situation.
Nobody is necessarily wanting to get away with anything. What we want to do is, with this authorization, is it fixed? Eight is that, done, fixed?
Yes, yes. Everything is exactly the way that the engineers designed it when they designed that building, yes.
For both systems then, the backup?
It'll all work and there'll be no leaks, even if we ran out of wood, it would still work.
Right, right. As you all say, says, from soup to nuts, we are good.
Okay, there we are. Okay, there we are. Uh, so we're back to, uh.
You've got a motion on the board.
We have a motion. And is there further discussion of this fine thing? All right, and we're going to have to have two boards vote on it. So we'll start with, uh, we'll start with Ginger.
Uh, I agree with the motion.
All right, and Lynn? Okay, and, uh, and, and, and let's, let's do board, board each board separately. Jessa?
Yes.
All right, Elise?
Yes.
And Melissa? All right, so we've got one board done. So call your role.
Hi, Melissa's your board member.
Yes.
You're just.
All right, so you have your authorization to go do these things that we have asked you to do, and everybody knows what they are, the two toilims. And, uh, so, uh, let's, uh, let's hope that all works out splendidly. And if it doesn't, well, we'll hear from you again.
We're all on top of it.
All right.
Thank you all for coming.
Yes, and thank you all for coming. I, I thought you were just here for the Esther stuff.
I was.
All right. Okay, what else we got? We, we talked about articles of agreement and there's nothing, we know that it's going to be committee and you all know that you're at risk of being attached to it. Yes.
I had a couple of things that would be on the budget that I wanted to ask.
Sure.
Last month, we talked about the fact that it was determined support is needed for K through two during remote learnings. And that, Jack, you had requested that the principals let us know what is needed for this, and then we would look to see if we could use Esra money for it. Has there been any further thoughts on what we could do to help you get stuff to help the kids with this using technology at these young ages?
Well, yeah, I think the part issue was that we know that, that, you know, a fourth grader is going to have a waste of reasonable shot at, at doing remote instruction. And we think maybe a six-year-old, a four-year-old might feel a little tougher because it was sort of a joke last year.
Yeah, so K to two.
Yeah.
Were, were struggling with it, needed some other helps?
I'm not sure what you're asking me, I'm sorry.
I just took this from my notes from the last meeting.
Do we need sort of the equivalent of a, you know, we have, have in our high school system, have this thing called freshman academy, which really is, is a sort of recovery for educational casualty of, for kids that have, you know, popped through the school systems and just somehow managed not to be algebra, say, ready and maybe don't really read to, to, to grade level. They have the intensive remediation process. I think, I think the question was whether or not we need to do anything, and this is both schools, you know, is there anything we need to do special for those kids? And what might it look like? And I don't, and I, I would, and I, I can tell just by everybody's sort of big remembrance of this, that, that we're probably not ready to speak to it, but I'd like us to be ready to speak to it the next time we chat.
I can skip on it a little bit, just to skip.
The thing is good.
We, you know, um, we, we're, we're starting, we started a conversation yesterday with, again, with the working committee of looking at our summer programming and, and, and looking at the data, but how do we make it even more academically meaningful and, and relevant for our students? We, we know that the camp type of atmosphere is fun and engaging, and, and that's important because that's what is the hook, right, to get the kids? But then how do we target the real, the need based on our data, right? So when we look at a kindergarten or a first grader, where's the hole? And we're making sure we're, we're filling the hole. We're just not doing, everybody's reading, right? Like, you need this type of reading or you need this type of math. So we're really targeting the need to, to fill in the hole so the student's ready the next year coming back. And some of that may be really looking into where last year, parents could kind of pick, I'm going to come week one and week three and week, nope, we need, we need commitment because, because Sally needs her bucket filled in these areas, right? And so, but we're not there yet. The, the maps data, we just finished up map, some schools are just finishing up maps a little bit, so we don't have all the data yet to really start doing that. But we know that we can't wait until April or May to start planning our summer program. We need to start now and, and, and look at those things. I think the other thing we need to do is continue to look at our after-school programming that we're currently doing now. And is after-school programming, are we targeting the right kids for academic needs and then those needs? So that, that's the big pieces we can do, because I think between the hours of school start to hours to, to end, I think we're, we're, I mean, we got interventionists that the, they're used, they're doing a lot, and we're trying to keep kids in the classroom, not pull them out and do those things. So there's a lot of that going on. Unfortunately, we got this thing called COVID that just keeps, you know, like rearing its head, and it's like Angela gets, gets everybody going and then.
Hi.
And a couple of kids got to go out, right?
Four hundred students days so far at this school.
Yeah.
So like if you, you can be, you can be on a great path, oh no, 10 days and then you're out for a week. You know, so it's, you know, kids are going to be sick and they can't be in school in their second. Then if they get a PCR test and it takes two days to come back and before you know it, it's a week, a week and a half out of school, so.
And, and that's where like, you know, not that it's the savior and be all, because it's a logistical nightmare, is this test to stay programming? Because, and Rebecca Stockwell has been all over it, you know, and somehow I'm the lab manager, which is a great thing, right? Because someone has to be the lab manager, and I guess I took that on, right? Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm also a certified lunch lady, just so everyone is aware. I have passed the test, a cervical test. But that said, once we can get that in place and, and we've got, we've got some real quality applicants for the health assistance, which, you know, was, was, you know, like, we put that out, so we, using Esra funds, we've added on an assistant to every nurse. And, and part of that is to deal with the day-to-day, you know, insulin and, and, you know, diabetes checks and, and, and just the other meds, you know, that have to be done and just the day-to-day stuff. And then let's add in, today we did COVID testing for, you know, 40 people type of thing. And, you know, it's just, they need that help. And then if we're going to do test to stay, we still need to school nurses to do all their normal stuff. And like, I think we noticed like the day after Indigenous Peoples' Day, if we had test to stay up and running, we were going to have to test 50 students on, on that, on that day and in three different schools. And logistically, how do you do that? Because each test, you have to wait 15 minutes for it.
Well.
So, so, so that's, we, we maybe get the, the personnel up and running.
All right, so I.
Sorry.
We answered your question on this.
I think so. I mean, we were, it was brought up last month about remote learning and that being difficult for K to two, and did you need any other support to help them do the technology?
You know, whether it's.
I was just doing a follow-up to see if you come up with anything.
Getting support equipment or teaching parents or, you know, I don't, you know, use your imagination and think Esra is good for that, because that's what it's supposed to be for, but just to make sure we, I, I'm just very scared that we have a bunch of kids that from never, that are seven years old and have never had normal school.
Yep, that's a concern.
And.
I don't think it's technology. Kids are really good with technology. It's the, it's the academic portion. It's the, we don't have enough people to give them, you know, the in front of the screen instruction and one-on-one support that they might need.
This is actually a great argument for a wide, wide branded media specialist, by the way, because that seems like a place where that could be very helpful. But anyway, um, so with that noted, um, hold on just a second. I'm pointing back my, my screen to see my, uh, my agenda. I think we are, we, we're, we're going to move on the budget planning process and hopefully have, have a, an outline budget ready to look at, that Laura and individual principals will be ready to present to us at our next meeting on the ninth.
They presented their basic budget.
Yeah, but we're going to, but something that's, that's closer to the traditional budget that we would look at. I guess this might be more a Laura thing than a, than, than anybody else.
On November 9th?
Yes. And if that doesn't work, scream early, get to sign up, but that would be the idea. Because we are trying to get, make sure there are no holes and, because I think some of our, our other districts are with issues.
Can I just ask a?
Yeah.
It's on a Tuesday.
Yeah, well, part of the issue is the 11th is on a holiday.
I'm a dance mom on Tuesdays, I'm sorry.
Well, that, well, then, I'll tell you what, why don't.
Just forget it?
No, you're, no, you're mom, that's, and sorry.
I'm sorry.
Zoom you in.
We're not, we're not.
Dance.
I'm sorry.
Not even joking about it.
So I can work with Angela, she can.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
As long as you understand.
Liz, you too.
No, no, work, work like, and.
I think hers is Monday.
Yeah, all right.
I'm Monday, Wednesday.
Where is this dance thing, this out of your house today?
Springfield.
Springfield. We're trying to get something set up at Main Street, it has to be closer, but not yet.
Don't worry, Angela, I'll, I'll make sure you are signed up for every committee and that already happened. That would just slash all your budget. So that, that's.
No, 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 those didn't happen. All right, phenomenal. Um, articles of agreement, I believe we've touched on, and you have a committee, Vermont, Vermont Virtual, BT, Virtual Learning Center. Is there anything new on that?
Um, it, it, we're covered on Esra, I, I missed it and it should have been on.
Okay, fine.
Done deal.
Uh, Laura, I understand they never close somehow, and I don't know why, student activity account thing is back on, on, on. But A, I don't know how come this is still on, but haven't we, haven't we approved closing this sucker at least twice already?
Yes, but People Banks love you and they want you to go and visit them. They might have coffee.
They hate those people. Okay, sure, do you, do I need to go in person?
Um, I will contact the lady from People Bank to see what she wants you to do, if she's going to allow me to do something that you would just come in and cite the document.
Again, I'm bringing weapons. All right, fine, just let me know, you know? Just, this is just.
So, um, once again, just to be clear, so she can have the name in the documents, who should we put as the treasurer? Because only the treasurer could go and close the account. That's the same issue they had last time.
The treasurer of the district is.
Not of the district, it will be for, um, the Union Elementary's. It's just because it's, um, Westminster account still paying me.
So we need, do we need to create a treasurer of this board? Is that what you need now?
I guess that's what they need, yes.
Well, I thought Paul is the, is the treasurer of the district. He is the voted-in treasurer. We have sometimes had, for idiotic stuff like this, a treasurer of the board. If you need one, we're going to appoint one like now.
Yes, so, um, we do have, um, Paul Harlow that was, um.
Right.
Doing a portion, but then we have Kathleen Niehock, she does treasurer as well.
He's the treasurer of the civilized reunion. This is the, the, the Union Elementary School District corporate entity.
Only Paul Harlow then.
Paul Harlow is all you need.
Okay, and do we have a secondary person? Because we have encountered the issue as well that, um, we haven't been able to contact Paul. And, um, last time Lynn had to help me out with that, Lynn Morgan, I don't know if she remembers, she had to sign documents for me.
Lynn, you want to be assistant treasurer?
Sure.
Lynn's assistant treasurer.
You bet. Give me a call if you need me to come sign something.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll contact tomorrow the bank to see if they could put everything then under your name and makes it easier.
Okay, I just, so we're good. All right, Peaches, um. Sorry, I just, this is, this is, this has been like the most insane thing I've, I've ever dealt with. All right, great, so that's done, closed student activity. We talked about facilities and playgrounds to some extent. Is there anything beyond what we talked about in terms of like here, or is there something else?
So, um, I, I spoke with Jay at the Nature Museum today.
You?
About, with my kindergarten first grade teacher, about the possibility of setting up sort of a similar obstacle course type of play space out here. And like I had anticipated, it's like a liability thing, right? Um, so we talked about.
Go ahead.
Please say more about that, who says? If it's a liability issue, where's that?
Um, you know, like if the Nature Museum helps us build something out there and someone gets hurt, um.
Is this why, is this a bit craziness?
No, it's, I didn't, I didn't check with Visbit, but, um, I imagine that's not going to fly with them. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to call and see what they say, but, um.
So is it that they're worried about liability or we're worried about, because these same kids, if they weren't under our auspices, could go over there and use it and there would be no change?
Right, and so, well, there, there is signage that says like you're playing at your own risk, that sort of thing. So we, Jay is going to get back to me and let me know when and what days we can go over there during recess. I mean, it does, if you think about it, seem a little bit silly for us to recreate something that's just a nice walk away.
You know, we might be able to lease it for a dollar a year kind of thing.
Well, no, we, we can, he said we can just go over there.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking if it, if it's a liability issue, if we lease it for like a dollar a year.
Yeah.
And it's, and, and sign that we are assuming liability for our kids in that space, not as long as the Visbit people.
Yeah, the liability issue.
You have liability whether you sign an agreement or not.
Or you don't.
If we take our kids over there and let them play on some structure that's someone else's property.
Even if we're leasing it?
Leasing or even if you are leasing it. Because, because you are in locos parentis, and so therefore.
Some of this must come up anyway, considering this building and those facilities are owned not by us but by the town. So you're saying the town has liability.
Town has liability.
As long as they have the title to this, even though we're triple whatever it is, Lee?
Can we add that, can we add that, that agency would be additionally insured under our insurance policy?
I, I will have to look into all the, I, I've got a connection at home.
Yes, you do.
That I can tap on this piece, but we'll also check with Visbit to make sure that we're following it. But my understanding is there, there are two things here. So you have in locos parentis, which means that we are the, we're the parent, we're the child while they're in our care. So therefore, if we take our child or if we take our students anywhere, we have liability.
Right.
Whether or not there is any agreements.
No, the issue is that if you have a lease and hold harmless, which I think you can do, I just, I.
Yeah, we still hope, but, but.
They, they're the ones that get the liability issue that they're worried about, so we need to get that off the hook and then we have to figure out.
That's what I have to check, because they may still, like in a homeowner's policy, even though you may have a lease and hold harmless, you still, your homeowner is still towards if someone is hurt on your property.
Well, the only reason I ask is, like I said, this building, these facilities, that, that bank area is owned, but it, it was worse because the high school, innocent target, and all the grounds around it, including football field, are technically owned by the town of Rockingham. Now, I don't know if they are aware that under this theory at least, if they are responsible if we don't water it.
And I'll be the first to admit I can be 100% doggone here. Like I said, I'll, I'll check with Visbit and I'll also check with my source.
And that's kind of how to get to, yes, not get the usual Visbit, or you can't do that, because they'll say that about anything.
Yeah, it might, my, my understanding from the conversations I've had with, uh, my person at home, who does this for a living, would be that potentially, yes, the town would be liable and so would the school be liable. And, and so therefore, the question is, if there was a whole harmless agreement.
Could that be valid?
Would, would then the town no longer be liable? Would, would then the town no longer be liable?
Yeah.
I just want to check, that's the question.
Yeah.
We interrupted Angela.
Yes, we did, sorry.
And it's partly me. Do you want to go ahead and try to explain the whole of it? And then we'll hold our questions.
Um, so, so really we were, and you know, it's also tying it into our programming there. And I was originally thinking like the kids could help build in. It could somehow tie into some engineering that we could do. But we only have like a few hundred dollars left over there and that's only about three more days until we get a donation of some sort. So, you know, we were talking about like, could we build things with snow? Once the snow began to fall, um, and no, doing something more creative like that, that would be more temporary. That way, once we are able to use Esra money for something, um, nothing would be in the way. And then we talked about potentially, I don't know if you've ever been to the elementary school in London area, but they have like a musical kind of thing. And so then I was talking with the kindergarten first grade teacher about making something along the fence.
Right.
Um, out of like recycled materials and making that like an outdoor sort of lesson, in a very similar type of way.
Well, one of the playgrounds that I'm, I went down in the, in the Boston area have, there's a whole wall in a lot of those. It has nothing but sort of musical, interactive.
And I was, and then we began like, once the kind of thinking about like, our original thinking with Nature Museum helping us build something out here not really working, then we were thinking about like, sort of like student-created like lawn games, like whether they're painting things or just coming up with games to play outside and sort of learning those games through the Nature Museum that reinforce like academic topics, but then they know how to play those games and can do them independently or with a little bit of support outside during recess, which would be great, that'd be like learning without really knowing, right? Kind of tricking them into it. So those were just some sort of ideas that we threw around. And then Jay had said that we could go over there and use that space, you know, whenever we wanted. They don't really have field trips going there during the day, so we wouldn't be interfering with anything in that way.
So good, it sounds like we have more discussions just to see, see what we can do. I just would like to have us figure out how to make, make some of these relationships, you know, as I said before, more formal and.
I mean, I have to say, like, the kids aren't standing outside bored out of their mindset. They're not. They're running around, they're playing on the swings, they're breaking the, the digger thing because it's so heavily used in that sandbox. They're drawing with chalk, they're playing, you know, I mean, there's a lot of interaction outside. They're not just like standing there with nothing to do. The tether ball, we've replaced that, I can't tell you how many times because they whip that thing.
Just a question to understand. You're talking about more outdoor activities for all the children? You started with K two.
Oh, that's, that's just who met with Jay.
Oh, okay.
And yeah, she arranged for the meeting so we could meet after school playing. So she was a part of that conversation.
Part of the issue is that you only have a couple hundred dollars left and you're trying with the Nature Museum. So then that led to him saying you can come anytime. But you're without the additional money to have them guide activities. You're trying to figure out what else. Is that correct? Okay, so we'll come back to it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, now there was one other item, there was one other item and I've absolutely forgotten what it was.
Give us negotiations. And let me suggest that we add that to the November 9 budget meeting because it's relevant.
Well, it's not only, it's relevant and I'm also, and this is an apology to all of you. And I have in back of my head that unless there's war, that we're going to have these meetings to a hard stop after two and a half hours. Because I think there's a mercy rule that you could apply. So why don't we do that? And, and we'll move on then to director's comments and date and location of next meeting. The date and location of next meeting is provisionally, uh, the 9th of November. It will be at the Westminster Community School. It will be 6 o'clock and it will not run past two and a half hours, I swear. So that's the deal there. So we're now on to director's comments. And why don't we start with our remote folks? Melissa, are you ready for a comment? That, that was a silent, I'm done, I think. Yes, Elise?
Uh, I have nothing in particular. Thank you and have a good night.
All right. Jessa, are you still with us or did you, or were you wise enough to drop off when I wasn't working? All right, um, moving on.
Lost connection.
That must have been it. Ginger?
Uh, no, I have no more comments. Thank you.
All right, Lynn? Uh, I just want to thank you all. And I think now you can have, you can ask your board for director's comments. Good night. Shame for me today.
Me too. Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it. And we're done.